Before the meeting starts, I wanted to ask you. What, what, what are we gonna do about all those gunshot fires that happened all night long or in the weekends? That side of town and that side of town?
Well, I kind of was talking to the officer, Officer Rodriguez. And um. We're trying to locate where they're exactly coming. And. We only got so many officers, so we're trying to pinpoint as best we can. And then, once we do that, I mean. Obviously, we have to have people that either see them do it, or we ourselves sit at the house, sit at the area and watch it. So, you know, that's.
It happens a lot here, man.
And I, I've heard it was happening in Ranger as well. I heard it was happening in Ranger. It seems like a lot of the smaller communities are, are getting that just because of the coverage, so they, or lack of coverage, I should say. So, I was talking to um. The, the chief of police in Toppenish, and he said they even had some of that as well. And that's kind of what everybody else is doing as well, just trying to pinpoint. At least where there's troublesome areas and then try to go for it.
I live on this side, and I hear it a lot over here. But I hear people.
In my area.
No, some of them hiding and shooting from their car.
I don't know about driving, I just hear. I live on Cedar.
On Cedar?
Yeah, yeah. I'd always hear it coming from out there, out there. Sometimes it sounds. Yeah.
Yeah, I can see, that's kind of like.
Sometimes it sounds really close, yeah.
You know, we. You know, you know, you hear the, the term community policing. And especially a small town like this week, that's what we need, we need the help of community to.
Hello?
Hello, come on, she said hello.
Hi, this is Paul Purcell.
We're about to get started here in a minute.
Okay, great.
Thank you, we can see you.
Great, I can see you. It's a new configuration since the last time I was at a council meeting.
Okay, we'll be right with you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our council study session for Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five at six P M. Can y'all hear me okay? Katie, good evening, can you hear me? Just raise your hand. Candy, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Good evening, Jamin, can you hear me? Jamin? Jamin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Okay, yep, thank you.
Yep, good evening.
So, we're gonna go ahead and go on to new business. Um, so, we're gonna go ahead and start with A, I know it's got different, but we're gonna start with Jamin. Uh, from G and O. And, uh, we got some good news, so we wanna update the, um, the community and councils on that. We've been working hard, I know, um, Marty and Jamie have been working hard along with, um, members of G and O. Um, and the office, uh, we were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm gonna let, uh, Jamin go ahead and take over from here.
Yeah, uh, good evening, council. Um, so, as, as the mayor said, um, the city was awarded some money. Um, the city applied for legislative appropriation funds. Um, and so that's essentially money that your local legislators go to bat for you to write into the state capital budget to get, get, to get the city some funding. Um, we submitted a couple of, we, you know, working with city, the mayor and city staff, we submitted a couple of legislative funding appropriation requests. Um, they evaluated them, they came back to the city and asked some more questions. Um, and had some, had some kind of follow-up questions, um, which we answered. And then they subsequently just, um, sent the city an award letter announcing that you were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand for water system improvements. Um, you know, originally, one, one of the city's two requests to them was for, for funding for some water mains to replace some of the old, um, cast iron steel water mains in town. Um, so their subsequent questions were more in the line of treatment and what the city's plan for, for pursuing water treatment was. Their award letter didn't specify what it was, this, this money was intended to pay for, except for water system improvements. And so I know, uh, Mari has reached out to the, the legislators to, to, for clarification on what the intent was. Um, you know, most likely there's some flexibility there that can now be kind of worked out with them, but. Either way, uh, it's, you know, great, great news for the city. Um, so essentially, this is grant funds, right? The legislature is, is written this into the state budget for the city, and so it's a. It's a good, good deal. We'll be, we'll be put to good use for, in a number of different ways for the city.
Thank you, Jamin, I'm excited. Um, I know that Gloria Mendoza had been reaching out to me and I hadn't been in the office for a couple of days when this all started and. I just really felt honored when, you know, she's up at the Capitol over in Olympia and reaching out to me trying to. Get our attention, you know, not just her, but I believe Debbie Mihai's office as well, you know, reaching out to me to. You know, get this grant, and I'm glad that you were able to work with, um, the office and get it, Jamin, I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, do anybody have any questions for, um, Jamin, Diane?
No, thank you for being there for us.
Sophie?
Is it for Tanya, this thingy, or anything?
No, just for the water.
For the grant, you mean?
Yes, the grant.
Okay.
No.
No.
Hey, well, thank you, Jamin, and I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Take care.
Thank you, too. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to B, uh, discussion of the purchase of the real property at four ten High School Road. Parcel two, three, zero, eight, zero, six, twenty-two, zero, zero, two. And we're gonna go ahead and, um, have Paul come on, Purcell.
So, Jamin A, and then this one will be.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, well, I've met with the mayor a couple of times and just wanted to get it before the council that. It seems like, um, my efforts to, um, make the building into some sort of a wine or. Uh, related entity, I, I have not worked, and one of the alternatives that I pursued at one point in time. And we actually had an eight hundred thousand dollar grant from the state to, from the Historic Society to convert it into office spaces. And, uh, unfortunately, the primary tenant in that, uh, attempt was the migrant council. And after we received the award, the migrant council pulled out as the primary tenant. So, we began the discussions a few mayors ago, a few councils ago, I'm guessing. Of whether or not the city could use the old high school as a facility to combine. Where the, uh, police department, the school district, the library. Uh, and City Hall could be, uh, located. And, uh, that would be something that the city, as it was, it's ironic, the grant that was, uh, posted earlier. Or, uh, announced earlier. Um, that kind of funding, uh, would be available to the city that is not available to me. And, um, actually, I was gonna say to the city, I had the property under contract. A few months ago at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, and the principal there, um, again, stepped away from the project. Um, I would be willing to offer it to the city for the exact amount of the amount of money that you were just awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If the city can commit to that and put the money together in the next three months. Um, I do think it's, I know that it's an expensive project, I know that it's also valuable to the. To the city and to the citizens there. And, um, so I, I wanted to get it before the council to see what kind of. Uh, interest and opportunity would be available there from the council to, uh, consider such an option.
You say for one fifty or two fifty?
One fifty.
We can't use that for that anyway, this is the water system now.
And I know, uh, Paul, that I did, um. I had a chance to talk to Councilwoman Vera about this, and I know she did have a few concerns. Um, uh, how much it would cost the city to renovate the building. And I know when you did come in, you came in a few weeks ago, we did, um, I met with Marty. And, uh, we talked about reaching out to the Historic Society, I, or, you know, about the funding. And, um, I have not heard back, I don't know if Marty has heard anything back yet, but we, we have started looking into it, but, um. Vera, do you have any questions that you would like to add?
No, thanks for that, fine, ma'am.
Is that? Oh, he's off line. The only thing we need to question.
Like Vera was saying, I remember hearing.
He's off line.
No, I'm just talking, I swear, he's off line. Yeah, we get him back on. That, um. That, that building could not be repaired or. With, in so much money, it would cost way too much money to renovate and get it going, I think that's why.
I'm sorry, I lost, I lost the connection, I'm moving to closer to my router.
Each entity that wants to come in, if we could get that person. To do their own renovation.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello?
Yes. Can you hear us both?
Uh, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead, here.
Well, I was just saying, the only way we could probably do it is if we could get the people to. Commit that wanna go into the building to do their own, uh, renovation, because as far as I see, the city, I. Don't think we could do it.
I, I, I can barely hear you, could you speak up a little louder?
I was just commenting that I think the, the different entities that might come into the building, if we could get them to commit. To renovating their own site. That, that would probably be the only way we could do it, cuz I don't think that too. I just don't see it. I wish we could, but.
Yeah, because they're gonna have to bring everything up to code.
Yeah.
So, it would be, it would be an expensive, uh, renovation. Uh, no question about that, but as a city, there would be capital funds and historic funds. Uh, available, as I said, we previously had a eight hundred thousand dollar, uh, grant committed. This year, the historic group made grants up to two million dollars. Uh, for, uh, historic renovations, and this would be considered one of the most endangered historic sites in the state.
I remember when you were here last time, when Mario was here, you.
I, I can't hear, I can't hear who's ever speaking there. Think the microphone's too far away.
A little bit more, more closer to your mouth.
It's, I'm right here. No, just sort of did. Okay, um. Do you remember what it cost? The price quote was it for you to remodel it yourself back, back, uh, like, five years ago?
Uh, it was three million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Well, um. I think we'll have to look into a little bit more, Paul, to be honest. Um, cuz that is, we do not have that kind of money right now. Um. We can reach out, and I know we did mention it to our engineer at one time. Um, so we'll just have to reach out again to, to the engineers, see what they can find for us, um, and we'll keep looking on our end. Um, give us a few more weeks, bear with us, and see what we can come up with. I mean, um, at the end of the day, it'll be a decision made by the council, but meanwhile, I'll have Marty look into it along with our engineers.
Well, and I think the key, uh, person might be your grant writer there, uh, in terms of. Uh, identifying the timeline for the historic state grants, which I think would be. Uh, a relatively easy and straightforward, uh, request. Uh, which could generate, like I say, between one and two million dollars. And then your, um, as you were just talking about on the previous grant, your legislative, uh. Uh, cohort, uh, in terms of looking at the state capital, uh, budget. Um, which would, would, uh, also be able to contribute to this. And then looking at whatever the ongoing operating costs for each of the different organizations. That could potentially be a part of the building. Um. Uh, in, into the future. I think those would be at least three sources of, uh, of revenue that would enable the city to, um, pull this off.
Mayor, um, Jamin did send me a list of funding, um, and there's a historical preservation.
Historical preservation?
Um, application that's gonna be due for a hundred percent grant. It's due by August first.
Okay.
So, we can have Jamin.
So, our grant writer, um, he's gonna go ahead and look into it for us, as Marty mentioned right now. Um, that one is due August first, so.
Okay.
I will, um, meet with him, we'll reach out to him, meet with him, and go from there, and we'll keep you in the loop of things, Paul.
Okay, well, I already provided to the city the, uh, plans that we had submitted, as well as the historic. Uh, registration and, uh, the, the various, uh, letters and requirements that are a part of that historic application. And I believe I provided to you a copy of that application, uh, which I hope can be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Diane?
No.
Sophie? No, thank you.
Mary?
No, thank you.
No.
No.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Okay, well, tha- thank you, uh, I look forward to further conversations.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to C, uh, the presentation on the city, um, of Mapton Library, so we have Candy Mendoza here with us. Um, this evening on, on the screen, so Candy?
Hi, yeah, good afternoon, council, um, I did prepare, I just wanted to give y'all a little bit of. Information about our contract. I did prepare a presentation, so give me a second while I share my screen real quick. Hold on, doesn't like. Are y'all seeing the slide deck now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, as the mayor mentioned, my name is Candela Mendoza, I am the executive director of the Yakima Valley Libraries. Um, we've been having conversations, we, um, over the last few months with, uh, four of our contract cities, uh, Mapton is one of them. So, I just wanted to give y'all kind of a general perspective of the library system, and then kind of dive into a little bit more detail around, um, Mapton here at the end. So, again, this is just kind of a general map, we have libraries from Mapton all the way to, um, Natchez. We cover most of Yakima County with the exception of the city of Granville, they, uh, run and operate their own city library. Again, governance, we are governed by an independent board of library trystes, we have five of them that are appointed by our board, um. Of Yakima County Commissioners, they each, uh, serve five-year terms, um, and again, this is just a quick. Little blurb or picture of each of our current, um, board members. They're obviously responsible for our budgetary aspects, um, and then the hiring of my position as executive director. Um, who then administers all the, um, plans and budgets and elements of day-to-day operations. The, again, we're a junior taxing district, so for the most part, our, um. Yakima County in general, with all of the cities, with the exception of, of course, Granville, and then our four contract cities are annexed into us. So, that just means that at one point, um, in time, it was voter-approved that part of their property taxes came to the support of the Yakima Valley Libraries. It's a formula that's predetermined by the state of Washington, and so the county assessors just use that to pull in, um, based on valuations. And again, similar to Yaw, we have a one percent cap, um, and there's some growth there for new construction and so forth. Um, we do have the sixteen community libraries and, um. Again, with the exception of, um, our four contract cities, which is Granger, Mapton, Titan, and Natchez. We were formed in the nineteen forties, nineteen forty-five, so as a library district. Um, and so basically, what it means is that if you're getting library services from us, either through annexation or through one of our contracted cities. You have full access to everything that we offer, so anything from our digital collections to our physical collections, to our services. To the programs that happen at all of our locations. Um, we obviously have cardholders, so it's, um, kind of like a membership, so if you don't find what you're looking for, you can put a hold on it. And pick it up at any of our other locations, so we can either serve you at where you work or where you live. Um, we also do interlibrary loan, um, so if you don't find what you're looking for, we're in partnership with other cities, other, other systems. And so we can borrow from them and they can borrow from us, so, um, I L L is also another option, if we, if you don't find what we're, what you're looking for in our collection, we can go seek it somewhere else. And then again, we have, um, our Libby app, which is basically our digital, uh, collections, so eBooks, um, audiobooks and all that good stuff. All in the comfort of your home, and that's of course, um, accessible twenty-seven, or twenty-four hours, seven days a week. This is just a little blurb about that, we have over seventy-eight thousand titles on the Libby app, you can download it. Um, put your holds in, grab your collections, again, you can get regular books, push it towards your reading app. Um, or use your, um, Libby app to listen to it, however you want to do that. Um, so yeah, that one is, is fully accessible to anybody from the library system, um, with their library card. These are some of our other digital resources that again, um, for the most part, you can access twenty-four, seven. We have Canopy that also has TV and films, um, LinkedIn, uh, learning, which has all the professional development, um, classes. And you can go into photography, marketing, uh, upscaling, if you're looking to, uh, improve your resume. Mango languages, if you wanna learn a, a new language, we have, uh, several languages that you can go in there and, um, start learning. And then ancestry.com, that one is a, a digital resource, but you do have to go into the library, but again, it has really great, um. Geinal- geological resources, so if you wanted to look into your ancestry, that's a resource that you can use, but you do have to be in the library to gain access to that one. We have other things, this is just kind of a, a big picture overview. Um, and again, this is just us and by the numbers, we serve a population of over two hundred and forty-seven thousand. We have around seventy-seven full-time employees, we have a collection of over two hundred and eighty-three thousand items. Um. At the bottom, you'll see our circulation, um, numbers from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, as you can see. We're, um, slowly growing and, and pulling in visitors that we may have lost during COVID, our digital collections are doing really great. Um, so now we're just kind of refocusing on bringing the community back. Uh, we did a community needs assessment a couple of years ago, um, they let us know that they wanted to have more programs, more places to engage. So, we've been activating our branches, um, more and more throughout this last year, year and a half. Um, again, we have sixteen locations, we also have a bookmobile that we launched a couple of years ago. We also have outreach services, so if you're homebound for any reason, um, even if it's temporary, we have staff that will pull, work with you, get some holds and deliver them to your location. We work with a lot of senior centers, um, and things like that to, to get collections out to those communities, and then of course, with the bookmobile. We hit up a lot of spots where we may not have a physical location. Just a little bit about hours, um, we have had to make some adjustments, um, in the last year or so. But just to give you an idea of where we're at, we had about five hundred and seventy hours per week in twenty twenty-four, we have about five hundred and fifty-three this year. Um, that's still giving us over twenty, almost twenty-eight thousand open hours a year. Um, for comparison, MCL, they have a very similar budget, they have less locations than we do, they are averaging around four hundred and eighty-seven hours per week. Um, and then, of course, we also have our digital collections that are available twenty-four, seven. So, a little bit around our financial health, um, and just to give y'all a little bit of context, I started with the library in twenty twenty-two. I took the position in the summer, um, of twenty twenty-two, one of my charges was to kind of look at the budget, everything. Um, to reset and then obviously give the board some recommendations of what we need to do as adjustments. They wanted to send, set up a facilities plan, a lot of our buildings have been, um. Maybe not fully neglected, but definitely in need of some general upkeep. Um, and so we wanted to be able to coordinate with the building owners, because we don't own most of our buildings, we only own four of them. Um, so this would be working with a lot of the cities, um, in order to. So this would be working with a lot of the cities in order to set up a process to do a remodel at our library locations. So again, as I was going through that process, the contract cities kind of came up. There was already a time in 2019 when the library system was, was already engaging with our contract cities. But of course, due to COVID, all those conversations just paused. So again, we have a healthy budget, but as everything else, the cost of doing business is just rising beyond the cost of what we're increasing every year. We have that cap. It's not meeting inflation. So we're getting a little caught in, in that mix. Again, we continue to monitor the market. And of course, all those elements contribute to our financial forecasting. Also, just for the sake of transparency, we're going through a unionization process that will include a new salary schedule. We did a comp and class last year. So all those elements are kind of bubbling together. And what will be pretty significant budgetary impacts for us this year and next. And again, with the board's approval, we're trying to do everything that we can to make some adjustments, but try to minimize the impact to our community and to our staff. So just to give y'all a little bit of an overview around Mapton, as a contract city right now, we're open around 25, well, it's 25 hours per week at the library. Y'all's fee for this, for last year, because we were trying to capture everything as a whole number, was a little, was $10,700 or so. Just to give y'all an idea of how much the library, YBL, is spending, just in direct costs, we spend around $68,000 in 2024. So again, this isn't taking into consideration any salary changes, impacts to the salary schedule and any of the unionization benefits and components. And then of course, 2024 indirect costs. So this helps with HR, accounting, IT, payroll, collections, delivery, and all of those components are what fall into the indirect cost bucket. So again, bringing the total to over $173,000. So in essence, we're kind of absorbing $162,000 worth of the, the cost of operating the library, which again, kind of brings the city's support to around 6% to the overall cost of running the library. So again, we've been providing library services to Mapton through contract since 1948. The contract actually hasn't been updated since 1948. We had one addendum or amendment in the 1980s and it was actually to y'all's favor. So it actually decreased the fees a little bit more. It allowed y'all to keep some maintenance amounts to upkeep the buildings. So again, philosophically and touching base with our trustees, they definitely believe that every community should have library services. It's one of the main reasons why we've subsidized and kept operating the Mapton Library. This is, this conversation is all due more to the fact that we just literally can't do that anymore. That our resources are just not going to allow us to continue to offer that benefit. Again, the 1% cap, the cost of operating the library going up. And then again, some of that gray area of depending on what the budgetary impacts are to that new collective bargaining agreement. At this time, we are able to, because I know we all want to get to the numbers. What does this mean? How do we plan for it? So we're doing our best. There's still gray areas because we're still working out through some of those elements. But I think to the bare minimum, we kind of were able to capture this as an option for y'all. Which will, again, for us, it's to remain having access to YBL and then working with y'all to do special events with our bookmobile. But we will no longer operate a physical location at Mapton. Again, for the purposes of equity, because everybody else is paying the annexed amount, the city of Mapton would have to increase their fee to that annexation amount. So in 2024, it was about $32,330. Again, it's something that the county assessors do. We don't control that. They have the formula that's provided through the state. They do it through evaluations and then they provide it to us every fall. And again, that would retain your access to our library services. Mapton residents would be able to use our digital collections and then collection services programs at any of our other YBL locations. And again, this is with us not operating a library in Mapton anymore. Again, we are willing to be partners. The board made that clear, that if there's any way that we could help, we could. That we'll be willing to be workshopping partners. But again, just to kind of share on the side of expenses, if we were looking at potentially keeping a physical location at Mapton, we'd be talking more around $75,000 to $100,000 a year to help cover staff. And again, that would just depend on how many staff would get services that we offered and how many open hours that we would have. We're also open to having conversations about workshopping, having a regular bookmobile stop for the city of Mapton. Again, that would require some additional funds, up to 20,000. Again, that's just, and that's above the annexation amount to help us cover the cost of operating the bookmobile. And I think that's all the information that I had, but of course, I'm open to answering any questions that y'all might have.
Yeah, what time is the library open here?
Um, I can pull that up real quick. I don't know that I have it memorized. But I think it, it's there to capture after-school 1 to 6. Monday through Friday.
And so they're not open on Saturdays anymore?
No.
And then you guys are not open in the evenings three times a week anymore either?
I'm not sure when, because that might have been before COVID that those evening hours were available. But yeah, right now it's 1 to 6 PM, Monday through Friday. And just to share y'all information about why we come up with those hours, we check statistics and we see when the library is the busiest. So yeah, although we have usage in the morning or in the evening, usually it's the lightest of the day. So when we do have to make some modifications to the budget, we do use those statistics to determine when is it best for us to be open.
So my understanding is that we pay the utility bills there, if I'm correct?
Sorry?
My, my understanding is we pay the utility bills for the library, if I'm correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we pay water, light and we don't get any rent for the building. So, but I guess, I just confused as why you guys have such a big budget for Mapton when you guys don't really just, but pay your one person that comes. And before, like I mentioned Candy, when we had this meeting, the library used to be open in the mornings and on Saturdays.
And, and the evenings.
Mm-hmm. And I kind of would like it to stay where it's open in the mornings because we do have quite a few daycare centers here in Mapton. And that's where the kids used to go, if I remember correctly, because Mary used to work for the library.
Yes.
And I know that the, it's a big, it's a big thing for the daycares, you know, even for the kindergarten students, the preschool students, that's where they would go for the hour of reading.
Yes.
And so, I mean, I don't understand, if we're paying all utilities and you are not paying rent, you know, what do you all want us to pick up more? What more can we do for it to stay open? Because that's the only place our kids have to go.
I mean, again, I think it's all just a numbers game. Again, like I mentioned, we usually use statistics to help inform the days that we're open. And yes, even though we do see some activity on the weekends, it's always the slowest days. So we usually do prefer to do Monday through Friday if we see that they're busier than the weekends. But yeah, I mean, I, 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 I think we're all going to have differences of opinion about what works or what doesn't work. For us, it's more about the resources that we're devoting to the library and the $10,000 is just not covering that expenses. And again, the, the elements of us getting to use that space is also with the caveat that it's because of allowing the convenience of, of your residents to be able to get to a library a lot closer than having to drive to the next town. So we don't pay rent at any of our locations.
So are all the other cities?
But we still spend, so just, just to give you a perspective, we spend over $800,000 just on collections.
Collections for?
Everybody. Books, databases, digital materials, eBooks, audiobooks. So for $10,000, almost $11,000, just in the collections alone. It's an element. Again, we have to pay our payroll. We have to pay our accounting. We have IT. We have facilities. We have delivery books that goes back and forth to the libraries. So, I mean, we can give you the, we're just another public agency, so we're super transparent with our numbers. So I promise you that we're not just pulling them together. And I understand the contributions of the, of the city paying for the utilities. But right now, it's, it's not, I mean, we're not able to even capture paying for the staff member that, that operates the library. Sorry?
What can we do as a city to help? I mean, we need to keep our library, but I honestly believe that the number that you're giving us, that's just outrageous.
Well, the annexation amount, I, like I said, it's a state formula, so it's not a number that I'm making up. It's, if you were annexed into the library system, that's how much you would be paying. And that's what everybody else is paying when, like I said, it's a formula based off of of evaluations of properties. So it's not a number that we get to dictate. It's how it's being pulled through the state.
So that $32,000 is not a whole lot for a year. But you're saying to keep our building, that's all you have to do if there's no library?
Yeah, the $32,000 is still not gonna keep your library. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
So that part I don't think is as bad, that maybe the city can do, but you said, and that's not with the physical library. You want us to pay $75,000 to $100,000 to keep the library open, correct?
That's a, that's about how much it would have to be to be able to sustain operating it. Because I wouldn't want to, again, if we got into a contract, I wanted it to be sustainable. I don't want to get into a contract that every year I'm like, oh, we need more money. Oh, we need more money. So yeah, I mean, technically, we've been in a contract since 1948, so we've been subsidizing Mapton for over 60 years. Y'all have been paying less than everybody else that's been annexed into the library system.
So are all the cities paying the water and the light and everything for all the libraries, or is it just Mapton?
Most of the cities do, yes. Some of the cities, we do some cost sharing. But again, it's more through, depending on who is there at the time when the contract was developed.
So how many are paying?
I don't know. Again, I think it's, it's, I don't know that we can compare apples to apples because our annex cities have committed to providing us a revenue long-term, where y'all's contract cities are not. And I, I mean, again, we can share with y'all who's paying what, but it's not really going to change the numbers.
Hold on, just a minute. Maybe we can come to an agreement where we just pay for everything, even our librarian. I mean, we can, you know, maybe work that out, put it in our budget. She's there four hours a day. And the city just pick up her wages and we put our own printer, we contract with who we have to and get what she needs. Because I, I mean, this is.
We wouldn't be able to operate it as a YBL library if we did it that way.
Well, I mean, we're gonna be getting our books through y'all anyway. So it's, just let us, you know, talk about maybe paying the wages for our librarian, you know?
It would, you guys are then talking about operating your own library. I think I shared with you, and if you want to share that with the rest of council, Grandview's budget, that they're running almost $300,000 a year to operate their library.
I know, we talked about that, but.
I'm just saying, like, you, I'm, I'm not coming up with the numbers. That's how much it would cost to run your own library. And yeah, you could probably reduce it if you offered less hours. And again, that's not even including indirect costs. That's not including whoever is doing their payroll, whoever is maintaining their IT, whoever needs to go check them facilities. So that, again, the, the Grandview is a perfect example of how much it costs to run your own library. Sorry?
We have all of that already, what you mentioned. We have someone who checks IT. We, you know, we have our own payroll in the city hall. We have all of that. And I mean, if we have to help cover the cost to keep the library open, well, we are gonna have to do what we can. But at the same time, I would like a list of what other cities pay all utilities and no rent to the library.
We don't pay any rent to anybody except for one HOA at Terrace Heights because they're not a city-owned building.
And utilities?
With utilities, it goes back and forth, but yeah, for the most part, the cities do pay. And like I said, those are annex cities that are paying a lot more into our library system.
Well, we're gonna, we, as the council, we're gonna have to discuss this a little bit more. I, I mean, you have anything?
Oh, yeah. Why are they gonna have us pay more than?
Not like the four hours, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, $10,000 doesn't go very far, y'all. We were always subsidizing you, so it's gonna be hard to not notice the difference moving from $10,000 to $30,000. But that's, that's a change that should have happened a long time ago and it just, you know, again, there was other things that the library system was working on and I can't speak for my predecessors of why they didn't try to correct it sooner. But yeah, that's why I'm trying to give y'all examples of like, okay, this is what it costs to run your own library. Because obviously that's completely an option that you have as well. We obviously don't want to lose the city of Mapton. But if y'all feel like you could run the library cheaper, that's your prerogative to do as well. I mean, just to give y'all an example, that Grandview is spending that $300,000 and they cut their Libby services. So they don't longer have digital collections because they couldn't afford to keep it within their budget.
Candy, I have a question on that too. So can we do that with, can we keep a library at a reasonable cost without having those digital connect, connect?
Collections.
Collections.
Sorry?
Can, can you guys figure something out for us to do a little bit, at least more, less expensive without having those digital collections? Because that is, sounds like it costs a lot of money. Does Mapton even use that kind of, kind of service?
It's hard for us to do that because once you got a library card, you, you get access to everything that we have. So it would be hard for us to block people from using the digital collections. And again, that's just a small part of everything that we help.
You know, Candy, I'm gonna, I think we're just, I want to meet with the school district on this and see what they can help us with. I mean, I don't want to see our library closed. So I want to be able to work side by side with the school district. Maybe we can come to a conclusion where we can keep this open, but the cost really right now, I think that's just a little extreme. the cost really right now, I think that's just a little extreme. So there's no way we can keep the library open with just that um that thirty two thousand, that um, what's it called, the annexation amount?
No. Again, just from the direct costs, we're closer to seventy thousand dollars, and again, that's not reflecting any changes that we're gonna see as part of the collective bargaining agreement. And believe me when I say, we don't wanna do this either, this is super uncomfortable, we obviously wanna have as many locations as possible. Um but we just can't sustain our staffing profile um to keep sixteen locations open without um asking y'all to help us with more of the cost sharing.
So are all the other cities um complying and willing to go up on what you're asking them to go on?
We're basically at the same stage with all of the cities, we're giving them all the information around how we got here. How much it's costing to run the locations. Um and I know it's uncomfortable, and I'm not trying to make it, I'm not trying to accuse y'all of anything, because obviously, you guys were, it's the contract the way it was. But you, but all the cities were paying less than everybody else that's been annexed into the library system.
Well, let us um talk about this um a little bit more. And then um I'll have um Madi reach out to you and we can bring you back to a another meeting when we kind of figure out what we wanna do, which way we wanna go, and after I talk to the school district.
Yeah, definitely. And, and again, we, we wouldn't be able to do the split of the operational costs. So that wouldn't be able to be an option. Um but again, we'd have to figure out what the um a potential co-location component would be if you wanted it to live like in a school library. Um but yeah, that, that, we would have to figure out the potential math to that, since we don't really have that in any other location.
And the other reason I bring it up is cuz we are a small community, you know, we
Yeah, I know.
You know, we have to come up with an idea and work alongside the school if we can, you know, so um we'll get back to you as soon as we work something out, we, you know, we figure it out on this end, we'll get back to you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to give y'all numbers. Again, we still have a lot of gray areas on our end. Um but we are also creeping into our budget development process, we need to get our budget to the county commissioners um by early November, so um that's our timeline that we're working towards. Um because we do wanna transition into um whatever change might be in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, I, I too will reach out to the commissioner. Thank you.
Oh, I don't know that, that's what I said. No, I said we submit our budget to the county commissioners in early November.
Yeah, no, and I said I would reach out to the commissioner, cuz that's how I reached out to you at the mayor's meeting when I, I spoke to you, so we will reach out to them as well.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I, I wanted to clarify that it was, it was because we submit our budget to the county commissioners in November.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
So we're gonna go ahead and move on. Um
I think I'm host, so if y'all wanna unhost me, cuz if I leave, I think I'm gonna end the meeting for everybody.
Just a sec, thank you. We're gonna go ahead
Have a good night.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna go ahead and go on to D, uh, discussion on resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven, authorizing the mayor to sign and execute the interlock agreement with the Akla Valley Office of Emergency Management with the Akla County. Hasn't changed much money?
It just has to be renewed every time here.
Any questions, Diane?
No.
Sophie?
No.
Mary?
No.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to E, discussion of purchasing of police vehicles. So um y'all have a uh little pamphlet in front of you that the chief put together um for you for some new vehicles for the police department. So I'm gonna go ahead and let him um inform you of everything that he's looked into.
And just before I start, I wanna make sure that you guys understand, there was no reason for me to make two copies of the same car, same numbers, everything. But it's two vehicles, but they're exactly the same. And these cars were being worked on by Sergeant Madennis and the outgoing Chief of Police, Ericus. So I kinda came in at the tail end here. But now that I see the vehicles that, that they've been driving, myself included now, um just to give you an idea, the vehicle that I drive has over a hundred and seventy thousand miles. Sergeant's vehicle has over a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Officer Rodriguez's vehicle has over a hundred and forty-five thousand. And Officer Guzman's vehicle has over a hundred and fifty-three thousand. The average useful life of a patrol car is between a hundred and a hundred and thirty thousand miles before uh police departments usually get new ones and replace the older ones. Um as of right now, I asked uh our treasurer, and you'll see the back page, what the current vehicle maintenance has already been in total for the vehicles we have. And I don't know how, I, again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not uh trying to criticize anybody or anything, I don't know how the budget came up for vehicle maintenance repairs to be ninety-one eighty for the year. But we're already at thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And so that's already over forty-five hundred dollars for the year, and it's just gonna keep going up. The numbers that I have, you know, so far, on average, it's, we've been spending three thousand fifty-three dollars, almost three hundred, three thousand fifty-four dollars a month. And that's what it would be every month if we continued this way. For a total of thirty-six thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars for the year, if we keep going this way. And I guarantee you, this is gonna be more expensive, because the car that I drive, when you get to seventy miles an hour, it starts shaking. The car that Officer Guzman drives, it just, he'll be going and automatically it just shuts off, everything shuts off. So not only is it, it's, it's a, it's a hazard to the officer driving it, and you can't compare um mileage for a regular car that's driven regularly to a patrol car. So obviously, our, our wishlist, obviously, we, we would want a new car, but we know the city of Mapton can't do that. So Sergeant Madennis had been researching where he could get the best deal, and he found these, these cars that are actually from Kansas Highway Patrol. And obviously, they're used, but they're a lot newer than what we have. My vehicle's a two thousand fifteen, the one that Sergeant Madennis is two, two, two thousand sixteen. So, uh, and I believe the other cars are about the same, same age. So this is the, they're both two thousand twenty-two's Dodge Chargers, they got less than, just less than fifty thousand miles, the other one has, I can't remember, two hundred less or two hundred more miles than this car right here. And they're both B-sixes, so they would be better on gas mileage, and they're all wheel drive, so we could be driving them in the winter. Um the cost of the vehicle itself is thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. To transport each vehicle, it's thirteen hundred per vehicle. The vehicle equipment that will be added, as you see the picture right here, the car comes like that, but we're gonna add a light bar on top, and then there's the docking station for the computer, the modems, the, the barrier between the backseat and the officer. So that's in total, it'll be seven thousand six hundred and eleven dollars per vehicle. Striping is seven hundred and fifty dollars per vehicle. So in total, we're looking at forty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and two cents. And, you know, obviously, I, I kinda gave you a synopsis of what the regular mileage usually is for each, for a patrol vehicle. The use is between three to five years, depending on what comes first, the mileage or the years. You know, it's not something that normally a police department, oh, we wanna have brand-new, beautiful vehicles. That's why we want vehicles. That's not the case here. We need these vehicles. It's not a matter of oh, we can keep going longer with what we have. By the, I guarantee you, within a few six months, maybe, maybe sooner, one of our vehicles is gonna go totally down, if not more than one. And then what are we gonna do? We don't have enough vehicles for, for the officers. And, you know, we keep trying to do the best that we can with what we got. And, but these are, these vehicles, I, I, I don't know how long ago they were purchased. But um I know that Chief Arigus said when he came on, he actually had to send them all to get them up and running properly. That was the first thing he had to do, cuz they weren't even running, some of them. So
I have a question for you. Would you be able to get anything for these cars that you're driving right now to make up for that money that you need for these cars? Would you be able?
And that's, that's a good question. Um what we intend on doing is phasing out two of them. Maybe just one, because we wanna have one on standby, should something, you know, a car gets, has to get serviced, cuz what our, my plan is, is out of the four cars we have, Sergeant Madennis would keep the vehicle he's driving, cuz it seems to be, drive okay. And then we would keep the one that um Officer Rodriguez is driving, and that's the one I would drive. And then the other, the two newer vehicles that we buy would be given to the officers. Um so, to be honest with you, I'll be honest, I don't think we could get much for the vehicle that we are going to uh replace. I, I really don't, but we would try to get something. It's not just gonna be sitting there, and, you know, we something is better than nothing, and we would try to get the most we could, but for the age and the mileage and the type of car it was, and what it was used for, we probably wouldn't get a lot.
A Charger.
What's that?
We just got rid of a Charger last year.
It was a V-eight.
It was a V-eight.
That's a V-six.
It's a V-six.
And those are all-wheel drive, I guarantee you, the Charger you had, it was not all-wheel.
That's why we went to the uh SUVs, because they were four-wheel drive for the weather around here.
Right, right. I guarantee, I, I'll tell you, I wish we could get SUVs, but it's gonna be more money. That's why with these, they're all-wheel drive, it's still four-wheel drive, it's just a car. I don't know, I'm, you, you can tell, what don't you see? What's, what's, what's confusing you, what I just said?
Every time we get a police officer in here, the cars are no good. And we have to get others. I've been here for quite a while, and every time we get new police officers, for some reason, the police officer before that, the vehicles were just great for what they, what they are used here. We get somebody new.
So you're saying
I, I'm I'm not saying you.
I guess presenting the safety issue, so if an officer, their vehicle they're driving is not I drive it, I know what I, what I drive. The other officer, I'm sure he's not making up that it just shuts off on him.
So Tudy just
So, I, I'm not, I'm not
I wanted to just remind you, Arturo, that when Garcia purchased these vehicles, he came on and he said they were gonna last maybe three, four years, five maybe, but four years. They were still driving the blue Impalas, and those Impalas are what year? Nineteen?
I think frame that though.
They're older.
Yeah, they're older. And then the Charger that um the sergeant was driving at that time, he got stranded right there by the railroad tracks. They had to come and pull them because the car went out. So you know, that was why we got rid of the Charger, and then why we brought the Explorers, because um they were driving the Impalas. And the Impalas, we've had them forever, they were like nineteen ninety-nine, or not even two thousand, what year are they? Do you know?
I don't, they're, I know they're older than these, and these are nine and ten years, they're ten years.
And so, when he did purchase them, the chief then said these vehicles will be good for about three to four years? Maybe five. So he brought them on in twenty-two. We're already in twenty, what, four, twenty-five, yeah, so they're, I mean
Only then three years, and I was just asking that question, when were they purchased? Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, he said they weren't gonna last very long, but they needed them over the Impalas, because the Impalas have a lot of a lot of electrical, when he, you know, when he got them.
But the other thing, Tudy, is that you gotta, I, the other thing that I printed out is to show you already what's been, what's been uh done for vehicle maintenance. We're already over budget, and it's just gonna get worse.
The budget is not very accurate, cuz the
No.
It's not, cuz, because the lady went, just went up like five percent from what it was budgeted the year before, so it's not accurate, cuz the numbers weren't put in properly.
Right.
She just made up some number for her to get the budget done.
Got you. Got you.
So those were, that's my question, they're only purchased three years ago then, in twenty twenty-two, this Explorers that you're talking about? Only three years ago.
But he did say, Sophie, they would last three to four years, maybe five. And they, they're, they use them, I mean, quite a bit.
And again, we're not replacing all of them, we're keeping the ones that are working the best, this is why to replace the two worst ones. And um and again, it's, this isn't a new vehicle, it's a used vehicle, which actually has great low, low miles, I was very, very surprised.
I said, that does have low miles, that looks good. Yeah, I have a question, so the equipment that you wanna buy for the bar, does it have to have a bar? Our vehicles have to have bars, do they have those other lights?
It has the other lights, but we need that other bar, it's just
You can take those bars off the ones we have now.
They won't work.
They won't work.
Cuz they're on the SUVs, and these are chargers.
Okay, yeah.
So
I know we had SUV. Oh, it'd be the car. You're not seeing SUV out there, police vehicle.
So again, you know, this, this was started when, before I got here.
Right, right.
And I, and just talking to the sergeant and talking to Chief Ericus before he left, um you know.
And this was in the works before you
Yes, it was in the works, and
Now, so we're gonna buy them sight unseen, and no one's gonna test drive them, no one's gonna make sure they're running okay?
Well, according to what the sergeant, when he talked to this Kansas City Highway is if there is something wrong with them, when we get them, they're, they'll, they'll take it back and fix whatever, if there's anything that needs to be fixed. But
At our expense.
No, 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 not on our expense, their expense. And um so yeah, I mean, if we went to Kansas, I mean, we could go to Kansas and, and go try, drive them, but are you guys gonna be willing to pay for flights and everything else to go over there and then come back? I mean, we're talking, we're talking about thousands of dollars just for that.
What kind of climate is in Kansas? Do you buy cars like, like in Chicago? Like, is there's not like, by the water, where there's salt, people, it could corrode a vehicle that we don't know about.
It's very dry, very, very dry. Tornadoes, yeah, exactly.
Can I just ask one question?
And like I said
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Uh, I just am curious if a competitive process was used, because the, um, the price of the vehicles is getting into a competitive threshold requirement for procurement laws, so if, go ahead.
It was, it was He did price out different other vehicles, he even, I, I believe got prices for new vehicles, which as soon as he saw that, it was, we knew it was not even a possibility. So yes, he, he did do that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And he actually looked local for, for other departments, and the only thing that he could actually find, he actually couldn't find anything comparable to as far as the mileage goes uh to what we're wanting to buy here.
Okay.
We would have been in the same boat that we are in right now with high-mileage vehicle.
Okay. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Diane?
No. I only know that you know, if you need the car, you're the one that's driving it, and you have to be careful with what you're driving. I, I mean, I wouldn't wanna be in a unsafe car.
And, and again, I would rather my officers have it, in which they are the ones that are gonna be driving these vehicles. Myself and the sergeant are gonna, gonna get the older ones, because they will be more on the road than I am. So I want to make sure, especially when, when, when a car is actually just shutting off while you're, when you're driving it, that's just unsafe, you know, and like I said, mine, you know, seventy miles an hour, it starts shaking. And, uh, that's just not okay. That's not okay in my book, and I would hope, it's not okay to you.
Um, yeah, so to me, like I said, it sounds like a good price, and yes, they would know what they need, but can the city afford this, especially with all the police officer wages that we have? Have we talked to Jamison? Or maybe Sophie?
Sophie, we have Sophie.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I believe the chief and, um, the former chief did go over budget and sergeant. Did you guys all look into your budget to see about?
That, I, I am not sure. I, I, according to, I didn't, I wasn't there.
I don't.
According to the from, former chief, they looked into it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So Sophie, did they bring it up to you?
They, uh, I, I gave him a list, uh, Chief Ericus was, um, had a copy of, of his budget and expenditures and, um, with bars codes, uh, so that they could code everything, and he followed it. He was watching his budget really closely. And then I gave, I just gave an updated one to Chief Soto this, uh, this afternoon. So I didn't really look at it, cause it was right before I had it over here, so I, I, um, downloaded it and, and emailed it to him, but I can look at it, I can take a look at it.
One of the other things that was brought to my attention, and again, this was by Chief Arigus, is that the current budget that he was working off of, that he said that when he worked here previously was short two hundred thousand dollars. I, I don't know how that happened. I don't know what changes were made between the first time he was here and then when he came back. But he said that he talked to, not, not, not Sophie, but some other treasurer that was here on why they were short two hundred thousand. And the treasurer said, well, we made changes, it is what it is. So, um, I'm, I'm really curious to see what happened here with that. Because as you guys know, I'm sure, that sadly, but it's the truth, the, the department that has the biggest budget in any city is the police department. For this reason right here.
It could have been changed, because they didn't, I don't know, cause they didn't have the police officers, they just changed it?
Yeah, they created new positions, so that's what changed the budget.
Who created new positions?
Oh, it was created when you all were here. I wasn't here when that was done. You were on council, Vera, uh, Mark, Tudy, Opie? When create, when they were created.
Opie? That was, that would've been gone from quite a few years.
I'll give answers.
All right, that's just, you know.
I could see that it has actually dropped, rather than going up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that, cause they lost so many officers or something like that, yeah. If we have the money, that's what I said, if we have, that's what I said, Jamison here or Sophie, but they don't know, budget.
And you know, council, just, just so you know, and I, I maybe you do, but one of the biggest things, I mean, it's, it's already difficult in a small town to get officers. You know, to try to compete with these bigger departments, you know, um, just, just for your information, the, the officer that we thought we were going to hire one of them, he did not make it through his polygraph. So, um, that's, that's not gonna happen. But we, we try to do the best we can. But part of the, part of the thing that's going to help us and assist us, obviously, we are not Yakima, we're not Richland, we, we can't have the top-notch cars, top-notch equipment. But if we can do the best we can to try to entice people to come, you know, and to say to you that, oh, we're gonna get officers that are gonna, they're young officers that are gonna stay here for the rest of their career, I'd be lying to you. This is a small department, they get their three, four years, and then they move on. But that's okay, as long as we can keep cycling in new officers. But we have to have something to entice them to get here. So.
I agree. Thank you, chief. Any more questions, Diane?
Yeah.
Sophie, no, Mary?
So chief, um.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, have you checked into grants?
I've been busy doing other things with the buildings and stuff, but, um, and trying to get myself into the academy, which, that's another, just for your information, the earliest they could get me in was July first, but I am registered, registered now. Um, but I have looked into them, and they're out there for cars, um, which we still need two new ones. So that would be my first thing to try to get is cars. Um, so we can just replace all of old ones. But they're out there, it's through the Department of Justice, and, um, I've actually talked to the Chief of Police in Sunset. And he even mentioned that there's some state grants that can be applied for. But the, the, where I'm gonna have the best luck is through the federal, federal system. So I have been looking, but I have not had time to start applying for any grants. I'm just trying to get things done within our building, you know, before I have to go to the academy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Vera, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna go ahead and go on to three. We're gonna go ahead and go into executive session for five minutes, so if we can have the, um, we're going into executive session for RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one-ten. One I to discuss current or potential litigation action anticipated to be taken at the regular city council meeting. So if we can have our own citizens, they step out for five minutes. And we, um, gonna go ahead and go at seven-ten.
Well.
And, yeah, we're gonna be, uh, coming back at seven.